Good evening and welcome to the Newburyport School Committee meeting for September 17th, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. DeCantor.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Hochschild.
Here.
Mr. Riddler's absent. Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Could we please stand for the President of Legits?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, in the interest of not keeping people longer than they need to be, we're going to move our agenda around a little bit. We're going to turn it over to the superintendent here for recognition of some district staff, and then we will have public comment and do our consent agenda and move through the rest of our agenda. So, item four on the agenda is actually going to take place now. I turn it over to Sean.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And I think very important for us as a school community is to recognize not only best practice, but staff members that kind of go above and beyond and really make learning very special in our schools. And we have some staff members here today that we would like to recognize. I would like at this time to call up our principal for pre-K and K, Ms. Sullivan, and I believe...
Tarzer.
That is...
Tarzer.
Oh, not, I'll do Tara in a second. Yeah. So, why don't you come on up, and we're going to be recognizing some special staff members. You can come right up here.
Right over there.
Move, right. Right in the front.
I'd like to be able to get three camera angles so we can change the bidding process.
Okay, thank you. This is so nice to start the year by being able to recognize such a wonderful thing. In our district, we have been implementing PBIS with the help of the committee, but also with two amazing coaches that I am so very honored to work with. These two staff members have done the most amazing job in terms of ordering signage for our building, putting in place Clipper tickets and incentives for the children, filming videos of great behavior, and then rolling out lessons for really the first three weeks of school. I think we've just finished with our assemblies and everything. They have done the most amazing job, and I'm really, really pleased to be here tonight to say thank you to Michelle Clark, our school psychologist and PBIS coach. And her co-coach, Lisa Mascara, who is our BCBA at the Brisbane School. And Mr. Menon was just asking me, what is PBIS? Positive Behavior?
No, I know, but I just...
Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And that is teaching the children really universal language, universal expectations in all areas of the school. And they can earn, at our school, Clipper tickets for doing the right things, and then earn class incentives and other wonderful incentives. We have some drawings in the morning, but really, we could not have done this without Michelle and Lisa, who really are so busy in their own right and their own roles, but have done the most amazing job, have worked such long hours this summer, and have really just been such a motivating force in our community. So, thank you so very much.
Come on up.
Yep, come on up. We have a couple certificates of appreciation for... First one. All right. At this time, we would, I'd like to call up Tara Rossi to kind of present the Mullen staff that's here tonight for their dedication and commitment regarding also PBIS. And just for the school committee and the people that are watching, the opening of schools this year was just really, it was awesome. I think the initiative, the PBIS, the principals and the staff, really creating a culture of people, the students feeling really welcome coming into school and visiting the schools, you know, throughout the year thus far. You can just sense a great place to learn, and I really just want to thank the staff that's here for all your efforts, too. So, at this time, Principal Rossi.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks, everybody. I want to ditto Amy with, it's awesome to start a school year with recognizing some amazing staff because we have so many of them. I actually have five out of my seven PBIS team members here, and each member has been, jumped on board right away and has been highly beneficial. They just finished doing expectations for every area of the building. They created PBIS passports. Every single Mullen student had a little passport book, and as they went through and learned the expectation for an area, they got their stamp. They created PBIS handbooks. The work that they do is just amazing. And I think a big point about PBIS is, you know, it supports for all students. It's a big part of creating safe and supportive schools. And so, it lays a foundation for every student. So, recognizing students for being respectful, responsible, and kind. And then, if there are students that are struggling with different types of social, emotional behavioral issues, we step it up to a different level and look at those students as individuals and see what we can put into place for them. So, we just have a fantastic team. So, I would like to recognize Maggie Flaherty. She is one of our school adjustment counselors. You've got to stand up and get your clap. Steph Berger, she is one of our special education teachers. Kristin Smolsky, our school interventionist. And behind them, Lee Cassidy, fifth grade teacher. And Emily Weber, fourth grade teacher. And I am highly appreciative of all their work. Oh, thank you. The other two that are missing are Jess Burke, she is also one of our special education teachers, and Alyssa Gallegos, our Mullen NOC art teacher.
I'm afraid you have to stand up again and come up for the photo opportunity that Angela will get.
I'll get from the front.
Yeah. Thank you all so much.
Sean, cooperate.
Now, Amy will be next.
Yeah, you can't hold it. Sean, give them the certificate so they can hold it.
Doesn't matter if you get the right names out.
Anyone want to go together with the other?
Yeah, we can do that right now.
We'll do one more recognition.
Oh, there's one more.
Before we take a recess, I have one more recognition. So, through a interview process, I would just like to update the assistant principal at the NOC. So, Principal Furlong and her staff, in the first week of school, conducted interviews for the first round. And then, there were three finalists that went through an interview process for the second round, and then one selection has been made with Mr. Nick Makos, who will be appointed as the new assistant principal at the NOC. And just to give a little background on Mr. Makos, he grew up in Lynn, Massachusetts, graduated from Lynn English, and he has strong North Shore ties. His two master's degrees, one in education, teaching American Studies and History, and his second master's is in educational leadership. Nick has been in education for the past 12 years, several years teaching and a diverse range of students on various levels. In the last five years, administrative experience as an assistant principal at K-12 Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator in Everett, and as an interim, currently was an interim assistant principal in the Briscoe Middle School in Beverly. Mr. Makos brings a lot of teaching and administrative experience with him. A few key areas, he's very familiar with PBIS, which we just recognized tonight. Implementations of STEAM in Algebra I in the sixth grade in one of his previous schools, which also tied in to the dual enrollment program later on at the high school in the district that he worked in. He's very dedicated and committed to the staff and students from the references. Nick will go beyond the call of duty, help any student and family, and he will become part of the Newburyport community. So, we are pleased to announce Mr. Makos will be joining the NOC middle school team, and I'd like to have him come on up with Principal Furlong.
Oh, I guess I will say something.
Sure.
Well, I'm super excited to have Nick on board. I think he's going to bring an excellent energy. We're also engaged in a PBIS initiative, and that's something that we talked to him a lot about as we did our interview. He's got a lot of great experience in the past couple of weeks of opening a brand-new school, which is really just a huge project. They added a whole fifth grade, so a lot of experience with our age group, great energy, and personally, I'm looking forward to having an assistant to get.
I'm just excited to be here. I follow Mr. Gallagher's career here. I'm excited to be a part of your team as you grow this district, also with Principal Furlong, Principal Rossi. You know, I know you guys had an arduous task to hire somebody. I'm just excited to be a part of the team in any way that I can help this district grow in any possible way. I'm really just fortunate to be a part of this, and I look forward to being here.
Thank you. At this time, I would recommend if we could take a five-minute recess to have school committee and myself congratulate our teachers once more, and then we can get on with our regular business.
To me. Okay. Five minutes.
We'll take a break.
Develop their own words to behave with others. They don't care for their parents or the seniors as well. I think it is not the case over here. In case it is here, how we will we adopt and then let's say make the positive impression in this case? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a good question and we'll try to direct you to where we can give you some answers. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have warrants?
Yes, we have four warrants. First warrant. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate five thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and no cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate fifteen thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents be approved for the city auditor, for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last warrant. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate two hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred two dollars and seventy-two cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
I knew there'd be a discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We also have a set of minutes before us from the business meeting of Tuesday, September fourth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second, Brian Callahan. Any discussion changes? Mayor?
There's just a little bit of a change that has to happen at the top of the, which Mrs. Kennedy, normally I start the order, the meeting, and then it's you turn over the chairmanship to you. Vice Chair is here, not me. There's just a little bit on the top of the minutes that have to be corrected in terms of the start of the meeting, and then you took over as chair, that kind of, so it's just a, you know, a minor.
One of the parents' names was Mariana, not Maria.
Okay, so with those changes?
Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. We are going to move to the fifth item. I had a, an email about a project that a young local artist is proposing, and I wanted to give her an opportunity to talk with us about it. She's also talking to several other groups in the community and you can, if you would join us up here, probably take a seat right over here, that will get you on cameras. This is Emily Crotto. I got the pronunciation right?
Yes, correct.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Emily. A little bit about myself was I'm, I was a freshman at College of Charleston studying art. And now I'm on a gap year before I go back to resume my studies at an art school, hopefully. I'm spending my time traveling in my gap year and expanding my portfolio, trying to get like different projects, you know, experimenting with different like art opportunities and what I can get myself into. I work a lot with The Vans Shoe, I don't know if anyone's familiar with that brand? But yeah, I do a lot with them and drawing on them and customizing every shoe to every commissioner, to like what their interests are, and I, if you get my paper, there's some examples of my work on there. And my passions besides art are like surfing, snowboarding, and fashion and hiking. And so I'm here today because, sorry, there is a spelling error. It's, I know it's Knox Middle School, but I spelled it, there's Knox Middle Schools.
I was just gonna blame spell checks, so you're fine.
But I am trying to get into working with skate parks and getting interactive with having my art be kind of like in the community, not just like something like hanging on someone's wall, like in their room. You know what I'm saying, like something like people can experience on a daily basis and like different types of people and get more eyes on my work. And so I've got, I'm doing a project right now at Red Alert Skate Shop, which is an indoor skate park in Dover, and I'm completely redoing their skate park and painting all over it and doing murals like through their, their walls and on their ramps and stuff. And so I'd like to get like more projects lined up for myself. And I know the Knox Middle School, it would be an amazing location to do or another project as so. I mean, it's very concrete and it's a great space to work. So I'd love to, I, there's more, also more examples of like what other peoples have done with skate parks too, like over the years and kind of get like more of an interactive piece, and I'd love to get students involved too. I think that'd be a great opportunity, like working with high school students, maybe a part of the art, National Art Society, to get them involved at this and like community, like kind of bring everyone together for that. And I'd love to do that and get you guys' support so I could go on to further planning, like what exact designs or costs and type of paints and everything to continue on to do it, yeah.
Great, I, of course, would defer to our skateboard expert.
Probably the only skater on the school.
Well, I used to skate.
The mayor tried it once.
I did, I did organize the first skateboard tournament.
Did you ride?
No, I didn't. I didn't drop in. I didn't drop in.
I think it's a great idea, you know, the concrete is just boring, you know, anything to, it's just fun, right? I don't think, there's no downside, I wouldn't think to having it done. Yeah, I don't think it'd be cool. And there's a huge amount of kids in the schools that would be into assisting too. It's definitely fun.
I, I would also hope that some of the skaters would get involved.
Yeah, it's their skate park, you know, yeah, definitely.
I'm still, I'm friends with the company that built the park back when, it was like sixteen or seventeen years ago now, right?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Um, I'm still in touch with him, so he would be into it, because they're all artists too.
Oh, really, yeah.
So I think they'd be willing to help out, I mean, that's a huge amount of campus to do, right?
Definitely, yeah.
And then that one wall is like fifteen feet tall.
Yeah, yeah.
With a transition at the bottom of it too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be a cool project.
Three to five hundred feet, all of that paint could be done for three to five hundred dollars?
Well, I was thinking like what would be the most like realistic way to paint a space that big that it's like can be not ruin the skate park or affect skaters, you know what I'm saying? Like if I use wall paint, it might chip off over time, and so I was thinking of using spray paint would be the, like it would, doesn't really wear as much over time as like a latex paint would, and also wouldn't affect the skating as much as possible. So it's like five dollars a can of spray paint. So I think that, I mean, I, after I do the skate park, I could give you more of a estimate on how much paint, I would need how much the costs per square footage.
I would suggest that you put a proposal together in terms of what you would need, and then with paint stores in town, you know, we could send a letter in support. You could go to a couple of these stores and ask if they'd be willing to donate some of the paint.
Yeah.
And then we could recognize those donations, so we have a lot, very generous businesses in our community, so that might help them.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, yeah, yeah.
Be happy to help you with that.
Yeah, love to, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I have two questions. One is, really more for Brian, probably. Is there any, any, because I've definitely not done any of the, it's not the skateboarding or anything like that, the skateboard park. Is there any concern with the optics of the design?
I was just thinking about that.
Misjudging the lips or the edges of the, is there something we should reevaluate?
I mean, Vans has a competition every year and the bowls there are painted similar to the one that's on this, and those guys are doing far more difficult things than the kids who skate here, so.
Yeah, well, that's one of the reasons I'm asking, our kids aren't experts. More seasoned and.
No, it may be a problem.
It's not be a problem. Like they can see the curves and all that sort of stuff? It's not a, like, I'm looking at this, I can't.
Well, you know, if you think about when Youth Services does their, their nighttime skate and if the fire department brings the giant lights, that creates one whole wall of dark, and it's still fine. You go into it and all of a sudden you're blind for a minute and you come back out, and so I wouldn't think it'd be a problem at all. Or you can do different, you know, lighter colors on the inner, on the inner corners in the bowl, just to, so there's no shadows.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just wondering if there are any design considerations we should take into, just to.
I mean, basically, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, that thing is a fifteen foot deep hole, and that's where the most dangerous part about it, you know, because there's no, no railing or anything. You can walk in and fall straight to the bottom, so I don't think having, so. So I wouldn't use blacks probably on the corner, because that looks like it's just going away, but yeah. Can you talk about the details?
Yeah, yeah, no, that was definitely something I want to consider when, like, creating designs and ideas for that, because.
So.
So would you bring back to the school committee sort of your work with the students? And you sort of, this is what we've decided to do for this big bowl of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, for us to sort of look at it before.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, not that we want to direct your artistic process, but, you know, I, I do think this, this one is a little bit busy for the skate park, but.
Do you know the square footage of the?
I do not, no.
Can you find that out?
Yeah, yeah.
Nick, go ahead.
Second question.
I, I have one other comment, and that is that, are you working with any of the art teachers in the school district?
No, I have not, um, reached out to any of the.
Uh, is that part of your plans?
Yes, I would love to, yeah.
Okay, because if that's part of your plans, you have a community organization, outside expertise, yourself, working with a teacher. Uh, that sounds like a partnership grant to me.
It does. It does.
Newburyport Education Foundation.
Yes, that's a good idea, good point. We have grants for these type of partnerships, so you could get yourself a small grant to be able to cover the, the costs.
Yeah.
Part of it anyway, yeah. I would imagine this whole thing is outside of our purview, because we don't run the park, we don't own the park or anything like this. The park's a part.
It's a gray area.
So it's a gray area, so just out of, but out of curiosity, is there a process in Newburyport for public art proposals?
Well, it depends on what property, if it's on, it would go before the city council. If it's, you know, city streets and, you know, there's a particular ordinance that requires their approval. But for use, I don't know that we've ever done permanent kinds of artwork like this that have been approved. I mean, we have sculptures that have been put in on the rail trail that are permanent.
Like the, like the painting underneath the bridge by Michaels on the rail trail.
But that's all part of the rail trail that was never approved by, you know, was the coordinator of the rail trail and working with artists and, you know.
Just, I'm just curious if, if other people would be interested.
If it's, you know, you could talk to Richard Jones down at the clerk's office to see if there, I don't think that they're, I can't imagine.
He's also a phenomenal artist.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he's brilliant. So, yeah, you could just find out if they're, if they're, you know, who you need to get a permission from. I mean, we can, we can certainly take a vote. It's not a binding vote, because I don't think, as Dave said, our, our responsibilities are limited here. But if, we could take a vote that is an endorsement of the project, certainly. And, and we could do that. But then you may need, I know that you, I think we're going to talk to the Parks Department.
Yes, yes.
And Newburyport Youth Services as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, I mean, it sounds like you know who you need to talk to.
Yep.
This looks like a wonderful project.
Just one other, just a question, because you mentioned the one you were doing up in Dover, is it indoor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you're talking about outdoor, you're talking about concrete, so I think, Brian, I think it'd be really good if she did get in touch with the folks who helped build it to find out, you know, what type of paints are going to work best with.
That would be, yeah.
Porous concrete and not, you know, affect the friction.
Dover ones is concrete too, right?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Except this is just outside, exposed to weather.
Yeah, I mean, eventually it will wear off, but.
And being like cautious with colors too, like.
I'm thinking like when the national grid comes and spray paints and on the street, that stays for ages, right? That little mark, so.
But there's also, with this concrete here, if I'm not mistaken, water gets absorbed and then dries with the sun? I know in the bottom of the bowl, in the bottom of the bowl, it'll build up, but if it's, you know, if it's, gets damp, it dries and it, you know, you just, I think there's just some engineering stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I just know that it's done before, because Vans has a huge competition and they paint the whole thing, and then they unpaint it, you know, so.
Brian, do you mind sort of being a, an advisor on this project?
It seems like it is.
Thank you. Brian, can we reach through his email address? I'm sure he'll, he'll connect up with you. I appreciate that, Brian, I hate to put you on the spot, but.
Sure.
I don't think it would be real productive if I was. So, do we have a motion to accept, to endorse this project?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An unanimous endorsement of the school committee.
Thank you.
Good luck with it and keep us surprised. Come back and let us know what it's going to look like. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Assistant Superintendent Angela Bix, record.
That was quick. We got them, that's Bob pretty quick.
It's quick, yeah, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. I just have a brief update. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about how we are changing our learning walks this year. And it's kind of exciting. We're in the process of planning. Right now, we're working with our extended leadership team and, and we are planning to do district learning walks this year so that we can develop a really good view of teaching and learning pre-K through twelve, so.
I'm just, I'm, I'm sort of the jargon police.
Sure.
So if you could explain.
Thank you, what a learning walk is, yes.
To the community, that would be helpful.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So a learning walk is when you take, do short observations in a classroom to observe teaching and learning. And we're planning to do them collaboratively. So our extended leadership team, we have nineteen administrators on our extended leadership team. We've did, divided the extended leadership team into two teams, a Team A and Team B, if you will. And the preliminary plan is that the teams will do learning walks on a particu, in a particular building, perhaps focused on a particular grade level or span of grade levels. And the entire team will participate in that learning walk on any given month. So for example, let's say that there was going to be a learning walk at Mullen School, and it was going to focus on grades four and five. Team A may go to the school on one date, and Team B would go to the school on another day. We would do short classroom observations, about ten minutes most likely, in pairs or trios. So, you know, not all ten people that might be present that day would enter any classroom at one time. It would just be a couple of administrators at a time. And then after the learning walk, the administrative team will spend some time debriefing what was observed, and this is non-evaluative, you know, these are for the professional development of our administrative team. It's going to help us calibrate our supervision and evaluation practices. It's going to help us really all be on the same page about what best practices we're looking for, and we want to celebrate in the district. It's going to help us grow as a team. But the exciting part about this is every administrator will see every grade level in the district. So we've done collaborative learning walks in the past, but we've stayed within the, the level that say the administrator works in. So central office may have paired up with a principal from the high school or with another administrator from the high school and observe the high school, or done the same thing at the elementary or at the Mullen. This will be the, the whole extended leadership team is going to get an opportunity to see pre-K, K, to see one through three, dot, 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 right through the district. So at the end of the year, we're hoping that we're going to have a really nice holistic view of teaching and learning in our district. And, you know, we'll use that for future goal setting. It will help us all get better in our roles as supervisors and in our ability to support our teachers in the work that they're doing in teaching our students. So we're, we're really excited about it, we're looking forward to getting that started. It really will, it will be a lot of learning walks for the administrative team, but really for any one building, they will have two months in the year. So there'll be four walks in any, at any one grade level throughout the year, so.
So, Bruce is the jargon police, I'm going to be the, the golds police here.
Okay.
I heard a lot of general objectives listed, but what specifically are the issues that you're trying to address with the change? And how will you measure it? How will you know that you have been successful?
I think the first objective that we're addressing with the change is to make sure that our, all of our supervisors are on the same page so that we all have, when we're saying this is an exemplary teacher, we all define an exemplary teacher or an exemplary practice the same way. So that's our first objective. And that is going to stem from some structured professional development that Superintendent Gallagher and I will develop as we work through this process. That's our main objective. This is really professional development for the leadership team is what this is about. And so when we talk about goals, that's our primary goal. We may have focused areas within that goal. So we may say that on our learning walk in a given month, you know, we're going to be looking for, we're going to pay particular attention to X, because it may fit into the goals of the district. And so we want to say, how are we doing with that? Let's try to get a pulse on one of those objectives. So that's really, that's, that's the basis of it all.
So I like the goal, how are you measuring it?
Well, we're going to measure it with the way that we handle our evaluations throughout the year, the way we hand, the way we conduct observations. This particular process, I just want to be clear, this particular process, we don't want any of our teachers to be nervous about this. This is not going to be every administrator in our district coming in to do any kind of an evaluation. But it will help the evaluators calibrate the way they are doing their evaluations associated to our evaluation system.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm really being a stickler about this, perhaps I need to.
Right, and, and I think, so basically, a couple of things. So we're bringing district-wide observations of the learning walks for us as leadership team to really have the ability to calibrate, you know, good teaching. So we're really, when we're looking at, for all of us, it's really identifying those five best practices consistently. And so your five best practices, you know, are going from the objectives to, you know, varied instructional practices, scaffolding, clarity, checking for understanding, and, and at the end, the review. So for us as the supervisors, it's really for us to identify those instructional practices and to develop consistency. So when you're looking at how are you going to measure that, when our, as a district leadership team, when we're writing our walkthroughs or our observations, we should see consistency from best practices from Kathy Ricchio, best practices from Angela Beck, best practices from Andy Wolfe. So we're all consistently looking at that. So when you're looking at how do you measure best practices, you're going to see those in those observations throughout the school.
I guess, I guess we're coming from, maybe I'm pushing a bit too hard, I won't comment any further on this. But I, I would ask that you think about, okay, if we give a course in a classroom, which is akin to professional development, this is a course for your administrators, we do assessments, we do some kind of measurement so that we know that the kids have learned it.
Correct.
And I guess what I am looking for is how do you know that you have a consistent view across, if that's what your objective is, how, that you have achieved this goal? What does it look like? And that's what I, what I.
I, I think we.
I don't, I don't hear yet, and I invite you to explore.
Yeah, and, and I think it's when you, I mean, the observation, the best practices, as Dave knows, it's really tied to your teacher rubrics, right? So when you're looking at the assessments and you're looking at best practices tied to what we're looking for, for consistency, you're going to see that through the teacher rubrics, through the whole observation process. So if we're like focused on student engagement as, you know, an aspect of best practices, you know, where are you seeing student engagement throughout the district?
So is there a way, maybe we could think about, and we've talked a lot about this strategic planning and PLN work and this, this is what we know about our students, this is what we would like to see improved in our classrooms and our teaching and learning.
Exactly.
This is the process we went to go about seeing if it's there. This is the PD we've designed to cover the gaps. And then ultimately, next year's SGP, was it effective or not? I think maybe that's, so on, on that sort of timetable, but it all starts with, and maybe we get a presentation or not, but what do we currently know about our students and what, and our teaching? And what would we currently like to see improve? And then how are we going to, if we're going to go into a focused learning walk and be looking for the following things, I would imagine you guys would want to have, whether it's, you know, I, I know Lisa pointed out there, because she was saying that Lisa's worked with John Hattie, they make invisible learning.
Correct.
So are we looking at like his top four practices and saying, hey, listen, you know, we've noticed this in our teaching and learning and our students' growth, so we're going to go and see where we are with these things?
I, I think, I agree a hundred percent, but I think before you can get there, we got to develop a system where, you know, the whole leadership team is supporting teaching and learning in the classroom. So that's the ultimate focus is for us to bring teaching and learning back to the forefront.
I, I guess to follow Dave's, to follow Dave's model that he explained, I'd say, what do we know about our evaluators today? What are the gaps that we need to correct? Are we going to, or how are we going to identify if there are any gaps?
Right.
What needs to be corrected? What are we going to do about it? What are the results? And that's, that's the process that I hear a lot about, excitement, and I, I think it's a great project. I'm just looking for the structures so that as a school committee, when you come back and you say, hey, these are the results, we understand what it is that you've done. And we're not stuck in a situation, well, the administrators worked really hard and they went to so many classrooms. Well, yeah, but did they learn anything? You know, what, what, how do they compare against those goals? And that's, that's what I'm looking for a little bit more, and it's a little rig applied to it, that's all. I think it's a great idea.
I mean, I think as I sort of understand it, what the school committee is asking for is what's the baseline? What's the baseline in terms of practices? What's the baseline in terms of what we know about our students? And how does this project, A, help us understand that? And B, help us pick out what, what we really want to focus on and work on and do professional development around? I think that's what I'm hearing, does that seem?
I, I would say before you get to understanding what the students, where our baseline is with the students is where is the baseline with the administrators?
Exactly, right.
With the teachers, and finally with the students.
And, and I think I would add to that, I, I agree with you, Nick. That's what this is all about, and part of our early work is to develop that baseline. Until we're there together and we're seeing the same thing and coming back and talking about what did you see? It's a very interesting process, I'm sure that, you know, that David has been through this before. When you do collaborative learning walks like this and you come back, it's amazing that Steve may have seen one thing and you would have seen another, and I would have yet seen something else. And that's how we start to create our baseline. But until we have the opportunity to get out there. But until we have the opportunity to get out there and start doing that work, then we'll have a baseline to go from.
And so, your, your, your measurement might be, you know, a, a general agreement amongst all administrators or a, a description written by all administrators as to what a proficient teacher is in these, in each of these areas that you just talked about? You know, what is, what is something that's proficient and what is something that's above average in student engagement? What does that look like? And, and, and if you can write that down, that is a good measurement. That's a great measurement because then you have something to refer to and say, "Oh, this is what this means."
Right.
And we do have, you know, we've got beautiful rubrics that have that in it, but it's all around the interpretation of that rubric. Are we interpreting it the same way? And so, that's what, really what this work is about so that we get better at being good supervisors.
And so, I guess I'm just thinking it would be nice, and something I, I always hope when I do this sort of work, is can we come up with a, a list of goals, something we're looking for growth in? Because after we come up with it, I mean, it's one thing to collaborate on you guys, but now, okay, so what, what exactly are we going to start looking for? Now that we've all practiced seeing the same things and talking about the same things, what do we all want to look for and what do we all want to start working towards? Sort of create, it's a way to create those common goals across the district. Other quick question, are teachers coming? I would imagine extended learning, extended leadership team involves like department chairs and maybe lead teachers? No?
We don't have any lead teachers or department chairs that evaluate in the district. So...
Well, not even evaluate, well, they're not evaluative. So, just people who, people who might be those change agents?
Right.
Or people who might not be those change agents? But, are teachers involved in the walking around and seeing other teaching?
They're involved right now with working with us for them, you know, to go into the classrooms.
And that would be the next phase of something like this for sure. This per, this particular rollout is very specific to the administrative team. But, I love that, and we have done that in the past where you, we create learning walks that include teachers and you're coming back and you're having the same conversations. So, you have people from multiple roles in the district doing a learning walk together and coming back and talking about what they observed. And so, I think that's very powerful, but we're not, that's not what this particular set of walks are about.
That, that has happened intermittently in the district, and I, I think it's a, you know, a really good idea. I, does anybody else have any questions? Because I do, just a couple of them. This is not in any way sort of related to the formal evaluation process.
Not at all.
Okay. And I just was going to sort of follow up and take a different approach to the question that Dave asked is how, what kinds of conversations you're having with teachers about this, about coming in and, you know, they understand it's not part of the evaluation process?
Right. So, this, this was a practice that I felt as a building principal was valuable. And, so we, we're kind of bringing this, working, you know, with our teachers and teachers' union because, you know, once again, we want teaching and learning the center point of what we do every single day. And, so to have the extended leadership team working together in two teams, going to every classroom from pre-K all the way to grade 12, does two things. One, I think it develops a culture of sharing best practice because we're going to be in those classes and, and seeing some great things and patting teachers on the back and not being evaluative towards them. Two, I think it develops, I think, great relationship building within the district. And three, it opens up ideas from, you know, a great teacher in kindergarten and a great teacher in 12th grade or a great teacher in the middle school is great, is just great teaching. And you can apply great teaching across all grade levels. And I think for us, this is, this is a new aspect that we're kind of bringing to Newberryport. And so, we want, especially when we first start, we want this to be a very positive, inclusive, collaborative rollout. And then I think we get, once we are, it becomes customary, like our teachers are seeing us as partners in the classroom, then we can start pulling things out in the sense of, you know, providing more support to enhance some great things or then trying to work with the staff and some of the gaps that they need. And, and I think the only way you know is what a teacher truly needs and what's going on in the classroom is to be in there. And if you're not in there, it's hard to, to make, to make decisions. So, for us, I think as we're moving into, you know, this first year as a leadership team, building upon a lot of the stuff we, we worked on over the summer, this is just the next aspect. And then I think we fine tune this process as we move forward. But, we, we really need to get into the classrooms first in a collaborative way.
And, and Bruce, just to answer that question, there, you know, there'll be a message that before they start, there'll be a communication to all of the staff that lets them understand the process, that'll make it clear that it's nonevaluative, that will explain the objectives of what's happening just so that it won't catch anybody off guard. And, and we have been in talks with the teachers' union about that. So.
Great. Great. Yeah. I, I just, you know, the, the two wonderful things that, that may not necessarily be able to be measured in, in ways that, you know, are objective are, are both really valuable. And I think just the presence of administrators in the school and in the classroom, I, I think is great. And the thing that I really like about the way this is structured is that among the administrative team, because they're going to be at every grade, you, you really are encouraging sort of a holistic look at good practices. That, that, you know, a principal from the high school can come into a pre-K class and recognize good teaching. And I think that that's really valuable. And the larger thing that I think is valuable about that is it, it's got to help us with transitions between schools, grades. It, it just starts a whole other conversation. Again, that's not a measurable outcome-related kind of thing, but that is really a great value to the system. So, I, I think.
And then, in the end, three of eight building administrators are new. So, and you.
Four. Yeah. Oh, no, three building, yes.
Three building, so more than a third of your building administration is new.
Right.
So, the idea that we need to get on board with some collaboration is right in the pocket. It's important.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else to add?
That's it.
I would ask Superintendent Gallagher to give us his report, which has miscellaneous listed.
Yes.
Mike eclectic.
I just, here's just a, just a quick summary on our program coordinated review. We've met with the state, which I provided in the Friday memo. And we'll do a full report regarding our corrective action plan on, on a few of the items that are partially implemented. But, I think this graphic, I'd like to share this with school committee. It kind of shows you the great work that's being done in the district from the program coordinated review. And I know that, I know there was an extensive, probably presentations last year in preparation for the program coordinated review. But if you look up top, these are all of the items in special education, civil rights, in general ed requirements, in English learning education, all the ones up top are fully implemented in all of those different items. Down the bottom, you can see the items, you know, just the visual of what is partially implemented. And I've been through four of these in different districts. And this is a, I think, a, a great report. And obviously, we, we have some work to do in the partially implemented, and we'll provide that through a corrective action plan. But I just wanted again to reiterate that overall, when we met with the state, they were, you know, as, as we work on the corrective action, they were, I think, impressed with a lot of the great work that we're doing here in Newberryport. And I just wanted to commend the, you know, before my time, obviously, the hard work of the staff, you know, throughout the district for a, a pretty good report here overall. And then, as we move forward with the partially implemented, so we're in the process of drafting our corrective action plan. And when that's approved by the state, we'll do a full, a full update for the school committee and the public. But I just wanted, it's kind of, share some good news with that of, of kind of where we are overall. The other piece too is, and we mentioned it the last, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question about this? I mean, I think that if you're just looking at this, this is, it's nice to see that we have implemented so many. Now, if we go back to the report that you sent to us about the coordinated review after the last school committee meeting, will we be able to find what SE 18, SE 20?
Yeah. And, and so-
So, we can go back to that report and that will give us what these specifics are?
Exactly. And I, and, and, and right now, we're in the draft form of our corrective action plan. So, this is what was submitted to us. Some of our corrective action plan right now we're working on. So, these may be taking off. So, these partially implemented, once we submit some other documents, this may not be the final partially implemented. We're in the draft form. But we can provide, I mean, it's the same report. I'm sure that you guys provided this before, but we can show you exactly what the partially implemented is right now.
You sent us something after the last school committee meeting, and I'm assuming that we can get about the coordinated review that this information would be here.
Yeah. It's public information.
Yeah. So, in terms of what these are.
Absolutely.
So, you mentioned that we are going to be evaluated in three areas. Is it going to be specialized civil rights in yellow?
This, this was, this was, yeah, this is the, this is the program coordinated review. So, this was from last year.
This is not the audit.
Yeah. This is not the audit. Yes. So, that's, that's why, right? We, we have two more, two more other audits going on.
I wish this was.
Yeah, no, I, I have to say-
This was all the work you did last year.
Okay.
And the state-
No, I, I remember I was working on these and getting updates on this.
Correct.
But I just-
Yes.
So, but this must be helpful in terms of the self-assessment that you're doing.
It's going to be very helpful.
It will be.
Yes. Yes. So, the, that's what we're saying, down the bottom on the partially implemented, we're in draft form on corrective action plans. And then what we'll do is when those corrective action plans are approved by the state, we'll do a full presentation of that for the school committee and the general public.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great. Well, I can see I've got my lottery picks. Good. You have more?
Just, just a few more. Extended leadership team, we, we've been talking about having more of a social media presence. And we brought in Mr. James Coffey that worked with us during our meeting. And really looking at Twitter and, 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 you know, Facebook and, and ways that we can communicate to the Newberryport community and really trying to work on controlling the message and providing a lot of facts out there. And I know this has been one aspect of our school committee that we're all working together on too, on communication and looking at updating the website and providing easy information for parents and families to access. So, this is one of our goals, and, and I think you'll start seeing with the extended leadership team, some more Twitter feeds going out there. I think Lisa Furlong, she has seven followers right now, and I'll be having my superintendent's Twitter getting rolled up pretty soon, and hopefully people will follow me and-
Are we going to put a, a page on the website like that literally just has, these are the feeds that are out there?
Yeah, with the icons.
Right.
Yes.
Because even, I mean, like I use it a lot, and the only reason I found all the ones that I sent to you guys last week was by seeing who follows who. And like, so I, I, I found somebody, I forget who it was, but they had the Newberryport Athletics, which Kyle does a great job. I mean, that was almost at the football game. I'm assuming it's Kyle doing that, but then there's a hockey one and a this one and a that one. But otherwise, they're kind of, they are a little tough to find.
Right.
Because the search engine on Twitter, you can't just put a Newberryport and find what you want.
Exactly.
Unbelievably, it doesn't work all that well.
So, that's one of our goals.
It would be a nice page to see.
Yeah. Right, right on the, the website. I had a great meeting with the Education Business Coalition. You know, we were talking with Art Correa. He, he set up, we were talking about the strategic plan last time. We were talking about community partnerships. And this was a great initial meeting for us to bring a lot of the stakeholders back to the table with our, not only our strategic plan, but with the idea of the college and career readiness and bringing the, the business community and the nonprofits to the table and assisting us as we move forward. Beginning, I sent out this, you know, I wasn't here this week, but the beginning of the literacy assessments were completed. And then we're starting to look at the state preliminary scores and accountability data as a leadership team. So, I know Emily Russen and Liz Kinsley did a great job with the beginning of the year assessments. They work collaboratively together. The farmer's market, which you all know was a great success this summer, we're working, you know, with the community partners and developing a plan to continue that throughout the fall to have pop-up farmer's markets. And that was just a, I think, a great community event. Actually, I think I ate a lot more salad this summer because of the farmer's markets. It's good for me too. Thank you. Yeah. The, we're updating our evaluation software and really trying to work, again, currently working with the teachers, teachers' union, and really to provide the forms for both administrators and teachers to provide ongoing feedback and to make those forms a lot more accessible for teacher feedback. So, we're in the process of that, really, once again, with the focus of teaching and learning at the forefront and really using, utilizing the evaluation system to benefit students and teachers and administration. Technology update quickly. Hundred percent of the projectors are operational at the high school. In addition, the administrative computers have also been deployed throughout the district. Last week, Thursday, Mr. Wolfe and the administrative team and teacher and faculty had their open house, a lot of positive parent feedback. And then also, just to follow up from Mr. Wolfe's presentation, he had the feedback sheets for staff and students throughout the two-week period as he said he would in room 118. They're collecting that data now, taking a look at the rules and seeing what adjustments can be made through student voice. So, exactly what Mr. Wolfe said, him and his administrative team were going to do, they're in the process. And he's, overall, generally, you know, not to ruin a surprise, but he said that the students and the faculty were, were pretty much, you know, addressing the same issues and kind of on the same page, which was great to hear with that. Just some good news and teacher support. Jamie Skazowski will be taking a group of students, provide entertainment at the Newberryport Retired Teachers Luncheon later this month, so those students will be performing. And Mrs. Peyton's class has begun some of the great STEM integration projects. So, did you want to comment on that?
They're doing stick explosions, and they're, it, it's wonderful. They, they build these things out of what look like tongue depressors, you know, these designs, and then with one tap, the whole thing works like dominoes and takes off and explodes. But they're integrating iMovie into that work and putting them in slow motion and coordinating it to music, and they're really doing amazing. Yeah. It's very fun.
Can we get some of those posted to the website, some of those products?
Definitely. Definitely.
And then just on a personal note, I, I just would, you know, like to personally thank all the support for my family and I, you know, with my dad's passing this past week, the Newberryport school community and community- The Newburyport School Community and community at large, just been overwhelming with the support. And, you know, I can't, it made a difference for me and my family to get us through a tough week. And words can't express how grateful I am to this community. I'll never forget, you know, the kindness that everyone displayed. And especially our school committee here tonight and Mayor Holliday. I can't thank you all enough. I'm very blessed to be here as a superintendent of this great community, and I'm looking forward to working together and taking us to that next level. But I just want to take a moment and thank you all for your, for your support. And that's my, that's my report.
Do we have any committee reports? When is the finance meeting?
Tomorrow morning, big 15.
Terrific. If there's no other business before us, I wish I'd had that dollar out here.
I just would like to recognize Kyle in terms of the email that he sent out this morning. I mean, it was really just a horrific time for Mayor McValley and Lawrence of Andover and Andover in terms of what they have experienced. And I am so proud of our athletic teams for the initiative they're taking, starting today through Friday night's football game. And they're going to be collecting toiletries, clothes, paper products, non-perishable foods, baby items, bottled water, and cash donations. And they're going to just fill up vans, and as ones filled, they're going to take it to the communities. And they will be collecting, including through the football game on Friday night. So please try and get that word out. If you receive the email, I posted on Facebook, we're putting signs up at City Hall. Let's do our part to help these poor families. So, thank you. Nice job, nice job, our athletics, our students and athletic department, absolutely.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, I stand adjourned.